Cameron County Commissioners Court, it is now ten thirty in the morning. Ten thirty in the morning, as we do all meetings, we will start with a invocation, I mean, I'm sorry, with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask Mr. David Garcia to lead us in those two when the time
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the entity, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Public comments?
I have public comments, Judge.
Yes, sir.
You have nobody else?
No.
Nope.
I just wanna, I wanna congratulate the Cameron County Commissioners Court and the Cameron County RMA for being present at a ribbon cutting that occurred Monday in Robstown, Texas. Some of us have been working diligently for many, many years. I know that I've been involved for over ten years on the project of making sure that at some point in the near future, the Rio Grande Valley gets an interstate highway system to it. And with a lot of work, a lot of planning from many, many folks in our area, especially at the county level, I've had more, there've been a few from the Harlingen area that also have been very much instrumental. This has been going on since nineteen ninety-two. Monday, the first six-point-two miles of Interstate sixty-nine in the state of Texas was opened. And I know six-point-two miles of a six, over six-hundred-mile stretch of road is not a whole lot of road, but it's a first step that was needed to happen so that we can continue the process. It is from Route or Farming Market Road forty-four in Robstown to the connection at I-37 in Corpus. There's about twenty percent of this interstate is already or almost ready for interstate standards. We in the valley have interstate standards from Mission, Texas to Brownsville, north in the Edinburgh to FM four ninety, and in Cameron County, north to the Willacy County line. There's a little bit of ongoing work right now, projects that are already funded and moving ahead. And we are very close to making sure that the first long leg of I-69, Interstate sixty-nine, will reach from Mission to Brownsville and then from Harlingen to Corpus Christi, which is a great, great accomplishment for our area. Once we get the signage up for this effort, you know, businesses and manufacturing companies and all kinds of folks can utilize the interstate shield to promote their area and their business. And I think it, most Fortune five hundred companies look for interstate accessibility for product. So, you know, I just wanna thank Pete Sepulveda, David Garcia, the judge, and the commission. Sophie Benavides has gotten very involved. She serves on the segment committee for the Texas DOT, which is the committee that serves the area between Brownsville and Corpus. I serve on the I-69 State Committee, which our committee is from Brownsville to Texarkana and Lufkin. And I can tell you one thing. You might not always agree with her or me, but we do our very best to do everything we can to promote our area and have input in what we're doing up there. And I know that the comments I got on Sunday evening and Monday all day, because we had meetings scheduled up there before the ribbon cutting, were extremely positive from folks from Texarkana, Lufkin, Houston, and all the northern areas. I'm very proud of our area. So, I think our Senator Eddie Lucio said it best. He says, you know, the rainbow ends in Brownsville, Texas, and that rainbow needs to be I-69 coming down. And, you know, we, interestingly enough, we got coverage in the Corpus Christi paper, the Laredo paper, the San Antonio paper, the Austin paper, everything that way. But I don't think I've seen an article in any of our local papers, which are the most impacted areas. But you know what? It doesn't matter whether we get the coverage or not. What really matters is that we got that first piece of interstates. It's the first piece of interstate that Texas gets in over, was it twenty years? Okay? There's been no new interstates in the state of Texas till this occurred last Monday. So, and I wanna thank the Texas DOT Commission, because we've had partners up there that have been great with us. So, I think public should know, and I thank you, Judge, for giving me the opportunity to serve on that committee and for allowing Sophie to be part of that other committee. And we're gonna keep working. We've got, we have, all we need is a hundred and forty million dollars, and we're almost there. You know, three years ago, we needed five hundred million. So, somehow, some way, that gap has really shrunk. And, you know, we'll continue working for that.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioner Benavides, for participating and actively getting involved in that. You know, the interstate high, I'll just say this thirty seconds or less, believe it or not, the interstate highway is an important component. It's gonna create job opportunities, economic development, for this whole corridor. So, if you don't know anything about the interstate, you need to look it up. Read on, the Rio Grande Guardian had a nice article on it that you may wanna read on the internet. But it's something that the valley does need. And I wanna thank not only the Texas DOT Commission, but the Federal Highway Administration, past leadership on Texas DOT and this Commissioners Court, and the current members of Texas DOT that are, have always been good supporters of South Texas. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna defer on item two. There's some folks that are driving in from out of town. We're gonna wait for them to get here. Consent items, are there any items under consent that any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately? We're gonna table double K.
I wanna pull M out, Judge.
Item M.
And P.
And P?
M and whisper?
M as in Mary, P as in Paul?
You said double M?
Double K is to be tabled? Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of those items that I singled out?
Judge.
Yes. Pete, you gotta hurry up, man.
Item H, pull out for discussion.
Okay.
Item J.
Okay.
P.
We've already got P.
And double I.
To take out?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on all the other items under consent?
Check.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item H, consideration approval of advertisement and job description for the position of Human Resources Director. Pete?
I think just to make the court aware, probably will require a budget amendment, a budget amendment at a later date, because the funding that's within the budget is for a position of Administrative Services Director. If this will be a Human Resources Director position, then at some point, the salary schedule will have to be...
But let me ask you, on the Administration Director, though, wouldn't, the way it was structured, you don't believe that a person can do, you have a Human Resources under that same person as well? So, it's just not just a hundred percent Human Resources Director?
No, I do. I don't know, it will depend on the job description.
Okay, Ken, let me ask you, Ken, is it okay, and I guess legal, to advertise for a Human Resources Director, and during the evaluation or process, tell them that additional duties may be required, which would require the administration of the departments? Would that be okay?
Judge, I think that's a little problematic, in the sense that, you know, we're, we're gonna be talking about qualifications when we go out for this posting a notice, depending on how many other duties and what other additional...
Can that be added later on?
Responsibility. Well, but it could be, but you would essentially have to go repost the notice for all, all of those in order to have a qualified group of candidates and to be able to pick from a qualified group of candidate, candidates in accordance with our policy.
Bring it back next one. I will tell you, I just don't believe that, we, we do need somebody at Human Resources, but I just don't believe that it's a full-time, one-hundred-percent position. I mean, I don't know, others may disagree, I just, I just don't think so.
Well, I know that I had discussed that item with Mr. Garcia, because he's the one serving in that capacity now. And, and I was hoping that we could include, like, the oversight of the IT division, you know, I mean, some expanded...
Well, that's why, that's why I kinda wanted to have it posed as, as the Administrative Services Director, and under that, you can have the departments that, and then you gotta hire somebody that's qualified to do that, but somebody that can do Human Resources, oversee IT, or else you're gonna create a whole bunch of other departments.
Yeah, and I believe, unless I'm wrong, the backup you have in your package is that...
It shows that.
Well, but that's not what the wording...
I know, I know.
But that's not what this shows.
No, I know, I agree.
So, the backup don't mean dudley squat. Well, I didn't get the backup.
Well, I think we have it on our desk somewhere. We have a, the Human Resources Director, and it says, "Description of the duties at the bottom, it's at the discretion of the county administrator, may be assigned other county governmental management duties."
Well, that's all I was asking, legal, if we can do it this way.
I didn't get that one.
Yeah, I think if, if that's the intent, then we probably need to table the item, place it back on with a different title.
Well, this is good, but it's just a title.
It doesn't match what the wording on the agenda itself.
Right. Okay, let's table it. Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides to table, then bring it back with a new heading, that's what it is. That way, there may not be a budget amendment that we need. And include within the description, Human Resources, okay, whatever, okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. J, consideration authorization to use the remaining funds and data processing to replace equipment.
On that, on the way the agenda item reads, it says to use the remaining funds and data processing, one hundred four five zero zero dash sixty-seven hundred.
What should that be?
It should be six zero seven seven.
Okay. With that correction, do I hear a motion?
So...
By Commissioner Garcia, do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item M, consideration and adoption of an order by Cameron County Commissioners Court prohibiting certain fireworks in incorporated areas of Cameron County, Texas. Who's gonna address that?
I pulled it out, Judge. I've gotten a number of calls in regards to, to this resolution that is being proposed, that I think we should look at and make sure that we're, we're, you know, being sensitive to our existing folks out there that, you know, do business and survive off of this in a way in which, you know, we don't wanna present a danger to constituency. So, tell me.
With this in mind, this, this, actually, this item is to restrict the aerial fireworks, the ones that can go anywhere and end up in a field and start a fire. That's what we're trying to restrict.
So, you're assuming there'll be no rain? There'll be no rain between now and New Year's?
Well, I think if we can find a way to make it open to, or we can just kinda withdraw this, if we do have rain, and rain is forecasted or it is predicted, and if so, then we can do what we did last year.
Well, we have, we have another meeting before Christmas, and it's probably around the twenty-second or twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. So, fireworks don't start really until January, correct?
No. That's correct.
No, that's the week of Christmas.
But these people will need to stock and have their, their equipment there in advance of that. That's part of the reason. So, they have enough notice to go ahead and not buy those types of fireworks.
Isn't this the Fire Marshal's call?
It, it, it's...
Does a court want to, right now, give, give the Fire Marshal the authority if we do get an amount of rain that, where he believes that there's no safety issues, give him the authority to, to make that call and pull it?
I would have no problem with the Fire Marshal.
Can we do that, legal?
I mean, I think...
Didn't we do that before already?
We don't have to give him the authority. I think he has the authority.
No, we have to, we have to approve it.
Not if we pass a resolution.
Yeah, we have to approve it. So, can we do that?
I, I think the, the way this works, Judge, I can go find the statute, if you'll give me just a minute. But the way this works, this is all keyed to, what is that department upstate?
The Fire Department.
State Fire Marshal?
Yeah, the state, it's the, I think it was the forestry, something like that.
The Texas Forestry Service has a level.
So, we, what we do is, we pass a resolution based on present conditions. And then when that, when that forestry service deems it appropriate, it is automatically taken out, is my recollection. Is that your recollection, Betto?
That's my recollection from last year. That's almost exactly what happened last year.
Okay.
What happened last year is that dates on the resolution were incorrectly written.
Correct. That was part of it, but then we had some rain.
That was only part of it, Commissioner.
That was part of it. Then it rained.
You're correct. That was exactly what happened.
But then we had the rain, and then it occurred.
Correct.
The State Forestry Service has a rating, and when we drop below a certain number, it's automatically lifted without, it overrides the Fire Marshal and us, pretty much.
I believe, right now, I know we're between seven and eight hundred, and if it drops below five forty-nine, I believe is the numbers, then the Texas Forestry Service drops it. And we have been working with the Fire Department, the fireworks stands, on a daily basis, especially recently, because they're trying to get guidance on their stock or their inventory. But, you know, we're guided by the map, not by our personal feelings or opinions. It's, it is what it is. It's seven and eight hundred, and we can't change that.
Okay, so then what is it that we can do? I mean...
I think the thing to do, Judge, is, you know, you can vote up or down on this resolution that's being proposed, or this order banning certain classes of fireworks, with the understanding that when the forestry service says it's okay, it's okay. You don't have to take further action. And these guys here can keep, say again?
I don't believe that's true.
Amane the language in the resolution, or have the motion include that language, that change in modification to the resolution?
I don't, I don't know that it's necessary. I don't think it is necessary, because the whole statutory scheme is set up so that an automatic announcement is made by the state. And these guys are aware of those announcements within a few minutes of those announcements being made.
Well, I'm not gonna vote on something where somebody thinks. I've gotta know.
Well, that excludes most people here. Then reference that, that state statute.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, then, why does it even need Commissioners Court action if it's subject to the decisions by the, by the State Department?
Well, it's funny. I think it's because the, the, our, our fellows here have to come to you to get the authority to ban them. And then they're automatically, that ban is automatically lifted when conditions permit from upstate.
Well, I don't have any problem with that. None at all.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Barera. In the past, have we had any problems because of fireworks? I mean, and we've been in a drought, an extreme drought, for some time.
Ma'am, there, there has been some accidents. Last year, we didn't have any, I mean, after we got that rainfall, we had zero reported accidents or fires caused by fireworks. I think this is just precautionary, and also, it's, we follow suit with what the rest of the state is doing. Fireworks are safe. I, I think the fireworks are safe. It's just the users sometimes. But...
This is, this, these are just for aerial, the bottle rockets and Roman candles and stuff like that, right?
Bottle rockets, Roman candles. There's other fireworks that, that go up in the air that go from surface to air, but, but it's not those.
Wait a minute, I think, let me, let me clarify. Y'all know this better than I do, but the, the ones that are being prohibited are the ones that are able to fly in a more or less guided way, like a bottle rocket on a stick.
Correct.
Or the little missiles that come out of the little boxes.
Correct.
You know, I mean, those can fly pretty good ways. And, but I don't think Roman candle, I may be wrong, and you, like I say, you guys know this better than I do, but I don't think Roman candles qualify as this, what is it, class B?
I don't know. I just said, I see that up in the air all the time. The biggie, the biggie here is stuff that can just basically leave a thousand yards away, or fall five hundred yards away, or bottle rockets.
See, the ordinance, I mean, the order itself says, "No person may sell detonate igniter in any way used fireworks classified under forty-nine CFR, et cetera, as skyrockets with sticks, missiles with fins." That doesn't apply to a Roman candle.
Correct.
I just said that.
It's, it's mainly skyrockets and missiles, bottle rockets. The fireworks, again, we have been working with the fireworks stands almost on a daily basis. They're even willing to go out to a middle of an open dry field and shoot some bottle rockets to prove their safety, or, but, again, we're guided by what the Texas Forestry Service puts out and not by our own opinions.
So, we can pass this resolution, then if the Texas Forestry determines that we're okay, then it automatically lifts, and they, and they can do that?
That's correct, Judge.
Okay.
I don't believe that.
I don't know.
Well, let me go find the statute.
I don't believe that.
Let me go find the statute, and I'll bring it back.
Once we pass an order, the order is set.
Let me, let me, let me go find the statute.
Okay.
Give me just a minute.
Let's pass on that one. Let's, let's move on. We'll be here all day talking about bottle rockets. Okay. Item P, consideration approval of the following...
Is there, was there any warranty work associated with what we had just put in there recently? Does anybody know?
This is regarding the precinct seven JP.
I mean, it hasn't been that long that we put in those security cameras that they had there.
Well, I saw Adam here a few minutes ago, sitting in the back.
My clarification on this was to let the court know that they were using JP Security, Security Reserve money for this.
I figured that's where it was coming from.
Yes, the, the agenda item is...
But my concern is, you know, I mean, it, it hasn't been working. Well, heck, we paid a lot of money for the original installation. Who installed it, and why hasn't it been fixed? We've never run out of JP Security funds.
Well, the thing is that when we first found out what was going wrong with it, we didn't know. We thought it was recording, and it wasn't recording. And the reason we needed to be recording is that we've had two previous occasions where we were able to identify two vehicles that had struck out there in our parking lot, and one of them had left the scene, and we rolled it back, and we found out who the other vehicles were, and finally brought them to justice on their, their accident. But now, it's not working where it is recording. The old office of where Judge Dan Sanchez had, we had to move all our equipment from the outside where we were storing our paperwork, and we made that a storage place. And also, we turned that one into the jury room, and we have to move all of the cameras over to where all our clerks are now.
So, there were not any cameras where the clerks are now?
No. The cameras were on the outside to monitor the outside, the entrance to the building, to the back of the building, and one right in front of where our clerks, or our clerks were. And then the other one was where Judge Dan Sanchez's clerk were. But since the closing of that office, we moved all of the clerks over to where my office was, and the other offices were made into a jury room, jury deliberation room, I should say, and the storage of files.
Have we tried to contact the company that put that in?
Yes, we did.
And?
We're out of warranty. And they, they'll move everything for that cost of one thousand one hundred and two, I believe was the total amount, moving the cameras.
So, this is the same company?
Yes, sir.
ADT Alarm Systems.
All right, anything else?
Leave that at that.
Okay, thank you, Judge. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Garcia, do I have a second? Second. By Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Double I, consideration authorization to utilize National Joint Powers Alliance, purchasing agreement for the following office and toner supplies. Mike?
Judge, each year at budget time, the court considers opportunities to decrease the budget and ways to realize savings for Cameron County. Each year, we reach out to vendors to be creative and find ways to reduce the county's expenditures when it comes to the purchase of supplies and products. On page four, you'll see in the attachment with that agenda, consistently, we've reached out to our office supply vendor Staples, looking for ways to reduce our spend and to increase the benefit for the departments as far as supplies are concerned. In two thousand and nine, you'll see attached, Staples came back to the county with realized savings of sixty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. In two thousand and ten, Staples came back to the county with realized savings of forty-one thousand dollars. With this agenda, we have Marcelo Cortez with Staples, as well as Mike Carter. And once again, Staples has come to Cameron County with some sizable savings that benefits Cameron County and its budget in the office supply arena. I think it's an opportune time for them to share with the county what they're doing and how they're trying to assist the county in reducing the budget in the office supply arena.
Okay, let's hear from them.
My name is Mike Carter. I'm District Sales Manager for Staples. Been with the company for thirty-one years, and I wanna thank you for taking time to listen to us. What we're gonna do today is, I'm gonna tell you just in a minute or two about Staples, and then Marcelo's gonna tell you what he has been doing with the county for the last few years, and what we plan on doing as a go, on a go-forward basis. So, as far as Staples goes, who are we? As you see the Staples Easy button, and you hear our Staples commercials, that was easy. But the thing that you don't hear about is Staples soul. And Staples is committed to the environment, to our communities, to diversity, and to live up to a standard of ethics that is second to none. The environment, we currently run a fleet of about two thousand vehicles, and at this point, we've got forty-four that are all-electric. And we have, we utilize biodiesel in all our diesel vehicles where it's available. Community, the Easy button, we see the Easy button, all the profits and proceeds from the Easy button go to the Boys and Girls Clubs of America. And we've donated about six million dollars over the last few years since the Easy button came about. Diversity, we buy about three hundred million dollars a year from diversity companies, minority, and women-owned businesses, as well as partner with diversity partners around the country, small businesses that help us deliver goods and services. An example is UT Pan Am, UT Brownsville. We partner with a diversity partner there. And the last but not least, code of ethics, we operate with a standard of integrity and responsibility to our customers, to our employees, and hold our vendors to the same standards. And ethics is what we live by. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Marcelo and let him tell you what's been going on.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Marcelo Cortez. I'm the local account manager for Staples. I'm the rep for the county. We, I think Mike passed out a, our presentation, and I'm gonna be talking next on page three. And those are your cost savings. And as Mike Forbes said, had mentioned, we, we read the paper, and we understand the budget shortfalls, and we understand that the challenges in balancing the budget. And we took a proactive approach, and we have a long relationship with purchasing, and we met with Mike and his team, and we were able to bring cost savings back of sixty-five thousand and almost five hundred dollars. He also provided you a list of the vendors who participated in this cost savings reduction. And I'm very proud to say, if you look at the numbers, we were the vendor that were able to provide the county with the greatest cost savings. To put this, to put this into perspective, when, when we look at the cost of business, when we look at our, our book of business with the county, it represents about fifteen percent of our sales volume. So, we understand that sacrifices have to be made. We're a vendor. We're looking at the long-term with the county, and we understand the challenges before you during these economic times, and the sixty-five thousand is, is the result of us partnering with the county. Before you, in our submittal this year, we have almost forty-one thousand dollars of cost savings. That's a hard number, meaning that, looking at your current usage, if the county doesn't make any changes whatsoever, if you continue the same spend, spend pattern as you have this last fiscal year, as, as you have those last eighty days, that's gonna be an additional forty-one thousand dollars of cost savings. The reason I, I place an asterisk on that, because in our continuing efforts to work with the county... on that, because in our continuing efforts to work with the county and being proactive and not just looking at this as the end to all means, but looking at this as a starting point, if we go into alternates, and alternates meaning that if a user orders ABC and it's an OEM, an original equipment manufacturer, and we can do an alternate, best-case scenario would be an additional sixty-five thousand dollars worth of savings for a total of a hundred and five. At the low end of the spectrum, an additional fifty-two thousand dollar total savings. We believe we're going to be somewhere in the middle. And the reason for that is because it allows the user flexibility. As an example, where you may have a user who already has a color-coded system in place, and if they want to order orange folders or they want to order blue folders because they already have this in place, they just, we can justify that instead of ordering basic vanilla folders. So this allows for that flexibility. It's a win-win for the county. I believe that we're going to be closer to that sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, what that means to the county, if we meet that target goal, is within the last two years, we've been able to provide the county about a hundred and thirty thousand if we meet that target for this year. Now, how did we get there? That's going to be on your next page. How we got there, the simple, the simple explanation is the usage analysis. We do these all the time. So we did a usage analysis, a usage analysis. And basically what we do, we review it by unit of measure, we review it by dollar, seasonality, quarterly, and the last ninety days. But not only that, we looked at other components. The inter-local agreements that the county has before them and how we can partner with the county with these inter-local agreements that they have. The other thing that we looked at is your core and non-core. And basically, what that means is your highest usage items. And right below is your, those items that aren't as high-usage, but you also buy. And lastly is the toner. As we all know, toner we use every day. It's a high-volume, high-cost item. So in looking at how we came up with these cost alternatives, we did analysis on which was the best inter-local based on the county's current usage analysis. We did a usage analysis and we actually drilled down to the numbers. We analyzed your high-usage and your next-in-level usage items. And then we looked at your toners. And on your toners, one of the things that we looked at is your reman toners, where actually is where you get your greatest cost savings, your high-yield, your twin pack, and where it makes sense, your single-use toners. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to avoid those users from keeping two or three toners at their desk or at their office, because we do offer next-day delivery. So on the next page, how do we plan to monitor this? One of the things that we did was, we sat down with Mike and his team, with Noemi Garcia. And we put a plan together that every ninety days, we're going to do a business review. Noemi, we're going to sit down, we're going to have usage reports before us. And we're going to measure results. We're going to measure results to make sure that we're on track. We understand that forty-one thousand is a hard number, but obviously, we're going to want more cost savings than that. So we're going to, we're going to look to see we're on track to begin with. And in those areas where we're not on track, we're going to take corrective steps to make sure that we are on track. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to continue to introduce new cost savings initiatives. How do we plan to do that? New technology, new alternates, and new products that come out to the market. And lastly, we plan to review our service. How are we doing as a company in servicing the county? Delivery and account management. And again, we plan to meet every ninety days. That's four times a year. We believe that by doing so, we will be able to better serve the county. Hopefully, this gave you a short glimpse into our relationship with the county. We've included some other pages on there that you can kind of look over at your convenience. You all know that we have a store over there by the mall. So at any time, you know, when we don't have something that you need right away, you can always also go to the store and purchase from there. But I appreciate the time that you've allowed, Mike and ourselves, to introduce ourselves. So now that you have a face to who Staples is as far as your local representation, we appreciate your business. We understand that we're only good as our last sale. So we don't take your business for granted. I assure you that. And we continue to work with purchasing to be part of the solution.
Marcelo, thank you very much. Mike, thank you very much. A couple of years ago, you all were one of the first, if not the first, vendor that came to us with savings. And I remember Mike and I having a conversation in my office, going back and we're trying to balance the budgets. I go back to our, all our vendors, ask them what they can do to save us money. And you did. I want to thank Mike for, you know, for doing that. I want to thank you all. But you all are your good corporate partner to Cameron County and appreciate your service to us as well. All right. Do I hear motion to approve?
Show move.
By Commissioner Gonsalves, second. By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries.
Want to go back to the fireworks, Judge?
Yeah, let's go back to the fireworks issue.
The local government code gives this body the authority to issue an order. And subsection D, I'm sorry, E of that statute, which is three fifty-two point oh fifty-one, says an order issued under this section shall expire upon determination as provided under subsection B, that such drought conditions no longer exist. Now, subsection B is the determination made by the Texas Forest Service. They keep track on, in various unincorporated areas of Texas of these drought conditions. And when they're no longer drought conditions, they advise our local people here. And that, this order that you sign, if you decide to sign it, will automatically expire.
Okay. So basically, you were right in the sense that we can pass this order now and if the Forestry Service determines something's changes, it automatically goes off.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that correct? That's what I'm hearing. All right. Okay. So what do you all want to do?
Is that the same for the burn ban? I mean, if the Forestry Service has that authority, would that be the same for the burn ban?
I don't know.
It would.
It would.
Is it the same?
It's the same, same scenario, same situation. It's all guided by the Keys Byron Index.
And the advantage with the burn ban is that the fire marshal can start issuing permits whenever he sees fit. If it gets lifted, he'll start issuing permits.
Okay. All right. So is this something we need to do?
Yes.
All right. Do I hear motion?
We need to do this?
It is.
Why?
Because if we don't, there's a chance that we're going to have fires out there that get started by aerial fireworks that you cannot control. Once they're set off, where they end up, you're not going to know. It's the aerial fireworks that are the problem. That's the only thing we're putting exclusion on, is the aerial fireworks to prevent those from being set off.
Hasn't this always been an issue, though?
It's always.
Before they had the determination by the Forestry Service. I mean, we've been doing this for.
I think it's always going to be.
Fifty-plus years.
I think it's always going to be a, for as long as the way the statute works and the way the state works and Texas Forestry Service, this is going to happen twice a year, Fourth of July and New Year's.
The compounding issue here is the drought conditions. There's so much fuel out there, dead grass, et cetera, it can be started as fire if somebody doesn't handle these fireworks correctly. That's why we're asking.
Correct. It's a lot of user error that occurs. And we've been working with the fireworks stands. The fireworks stands are, you know, pretty adamant about not putting out negative press releases and stuff. And we're aware of that. But again, we don't guide this.
Have we done this in the past?
Believe so, yes, sir. We did it last year and it did rain enough to where we were able to lift it.
But did we lift it or did the Forestry Service determination lift it?
The determination that it fell within safe conditions.
Automatically lifted it.
Yeah.
I suggest you read the resolution that was passed last year.
Okay.
Because the resolution that was passed this year banned aerial fireworks before the season opened and after the season closed. I mean, there was, there was a typo error on there.
Right.
So we never banned anything, okay?
We never banned the.
There was a typo last year.
There was a typo there.
And again, I mean.
Well, it was, let's go over and clarify. It was a typo that this court passed.
Correct.
Which means we didn't read it.
Correct.
Correct. It was passed, okay?
Well, I wasn't here last year, so.
Exactly.
I can't take you in for that.
Well, but you weren't here last year. That means you didn't read it.
That means I didn't vote on it either.
Correct. No, we were here. That was Fourth of July.
I'm all for the fireworks vendors, they're friends of mine.
Fourth of July. Okay. Then I was here Fourth of July.
I'm all for the fireworks vendors doing their business. Again, this is not, I mean, it does, so the court knows, I'm sure they know, the ban of aerial fireworks does hurt the industry of fireworks. And I'm not for that. But there is a fact that Texas received fifteen inches less of water this year than previous years. It's a historic year. And we don't have control of that.
Well, look, so is this in all the county or just unincorporated areas?
Cities do not allow fireworks in their cities.
Well, what about the stuff that goes off over the bay?
That's okay. And that's okay. And it's true. I mean, I'm all for what the.
Falls in the water, man. I know, but I'm just making sure we're not banning that because of a typo.
When there's, when there's aerial fireworks at the island, there's a lot of precautions that are taken, that can be taken at every house, which is fire trucks are prepared. I mean, there's, there's a whole incident action plan that goes to what the island does, what every citizen of Cameron County does is totally different.
Umberto, can we be sure that the National Forestry Service looks at it daily? Because what if it rains on the thirtieth with enough rain that?
Then we lift, we lift it, but it'll be too late to sell aerial fireworks. I mean, it's really a real gray area. I mean, we monitor it every day, Saturdays and Sundays included. But I'm all for, I'm all for whatever the commissioners want to do.
The new reports come out once a week.
We have a meeting next week, so what would Wayne and the week do?
No, it's not two weeks.
It's two weeks.
Or two weeks.
On the twenty-second?
People may end up buying fireworks if they can't sell later on.
If we.
That's what I mean. We're giving them enough.
Look, I think that, I think the fire, you know, we're protected. We need to do what we need to do. And if we're complying with the law.
Correct.
And it can be lifted by the Forestry Service and that's it. But we've done what we needed to do. I mean, no one wants to preclude these things, but at the same time, I'm not going to be a party to, you know, well, let's not do it. Don't worry about it. And then there's a grass fire out there that we cannot control.
Well, that being the case, we need to restrict the sale of lighters and matches to people that are sixteen and older and not have anybody buy them.
Well, that's not within our jurisdiction. That's not within our bailiwick.
It's above my pay grade.
So if you want to do that, that's fine.
I'm all for what the commissioners, your decision. You don't have to pass anything. It's your decision.
Well, I think we do have to pass something.
Well, with what you have, it suggests that you do.
Your recommendation is to pass this.
My recommendation is to pass it because it's false suit to what the rest of the state is doing.
And do we have a burn ban in effect right now?
We just extended it.
Okay.
Correct. Again, that's, I mean, there's, we get a lot of phone calls downstairs. I mean, a lot of people do get upset that they can't burn. But again, it's not the fire marshal's opinion that we shouldn't burn. It's what the state says. Texas Forestry Service puts it out and that's it.
Right. So I mean, we're following what the state law says.
Correct.
Since the last time we instituted burn ban, the situation's gotten worse. We went from six to seven hundred on the Keys Byron Index to seven to eight hundred.
How many fires have we had?
We're at the maximum right now.
How many fires have we had?
We're having about four, anywhere from between four and eight structure fires a month.
We just had one, I think, in Santa Rosa.
Those are structures.
Yeah, we have four to eight buildings and that's low. Usually, we have eleven. We have four to eight buildings, houses, warehouses, structures go down a month in Cameron County.
But that's not because of the drought, though, is it?
That's not because of the drought.
Because of fireworks.
That's because of illegal burning. That's because of poor wiring, people that hire people to come and wire their house without licenses.
Stacking tires.
Stacking tires. I mean, just all kinds. We see it all. And it's a serious issue. It really is.
You know, but I think as along the, I think it'd be good idea for you to email all members of the court every time there is a structure fire or something that, where your office gets involved and tell the fire marshal as well. Because a lot of times, we don't, I mean, I know because you send me a message every time, but I think it's important that everybody knows what's going on within their precinct in terms of any type of structural fire, grass fire, trailer, whatever it is. Go ahead and send them a text message like you do us or an email to let them know what, you know, what's out there. Because I know that you went out on a call, I think Thanksgiving Day, wasn't it?
Thanksgiving.
Or that evening?
Thanksgiving, between six and twelve, I was at a mobile home fire in San Antonio.
You know, and explain why, don't do it today. But explain, at some point, explain why, why you're getting more involved in some of this stuff. But at least bring every commissioner involved as to when they have something, anywhere in the county, but more specifically when it's in their area.
Okay, sir.
And you do that, right? I mean, I always get notices from you.
So do I.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're already doing that. Good. Okay. Everybody does. So then, don't ask them what the heck you do. All right. Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I don't support you.
Okay, no one's going to make a motion? I'm going to make a motion. If it dies, it dies. Move to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so then nothing happens. It's a two-two-one. All right, for the record, Commissioner Sanchez and I supported this to avoid issues with fires. Okay.
You supported this to pass a resolution.
Well, that.
To prohibit the sale.
Well, exactly. Well, what do you think the end of the day is going to happen? For the record.
Don't be using my lines.
Huh? You and I did the right things.
No, don't be using my lines at the end of the day.
Callete.
What's the next item?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm just kidding.
I'm just kidding. Calm down. All right, let's go back. We have a presentation. I think.
Yes, they're here already.
Item two, presentation of the status of our children, child abuse and neglect in southern Cameron County. Ms. Benavides and Ms. Montemayor. And I don't know who else you've got. All right, thanks.
I'm going to take a call.
Okay, we got a call.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, Judge Lynette Benavides. I'm here on behalf of the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. Our Vice President, Melvin Montemayor, is here with us as well. And we just wanted to give you guys kind of like a little report card about the state of our children. We have some special guests with us today, some locally and some that actually came from Corpus to give you this presentation. This is John Lennon. He's their Community Relations Person for Child Protective Services. Hector Ortiz, who's the supervisor here.
I'm the program director.
Program Director. The whole, yeah, rural Grand Valley. And we have Linda Duñez and Anke Villagasa, who's actually our community liaison to the board.
Welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, and Ortencia as well, who's another community liaison to the board.
Hiding in the back. All right.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Is this, yes, on?
Where's our IT guys?
It's going.
We're good.
We're good.
We're good to go.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is John Lennon and I'm the Public Information Officer, Media Specialist for the Department of Family and Protective Services. And we were asked if we could come down and kind of give you a report card on what's going on in Cameron County. And what we've done is we've compiled some numbers for our fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. And what we do is want to share some of those numbers with you about Cameron County. The Department of Family and Protective Services covers a large area, covers all the state of Texas. And Region eleven is made up of the nineteen southernmost counties. CPS is a division of the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. There's three major divisions that you may or may not be aware of. There's Adult Protective Services, Child Care Licensing and Child Protective Services. Our Child Care Licensing Division is the division that works with daycare centers. And they are the ones who license and regulate those facilities. A very popular question that we hear a lot of times is why isn't CPS taking care of that? Why isn't CPS involved with that? The family code specifically outlines seven major areas that is our area of responsibility and jurisdiction. And these are those seven areas. Inside of CPS, we are broken down into three main subsections. We have our Investigations Division, and that's how all of our cases begin. They begin with an intake from someone in the community or from a professional like law enforcement or someone from the medical community or an educator. Our investigators are the initial responders. They're the ones who go out and actually interview the families, interview the children. Another misconception is CPS is not a first responder like law enforcement or EMS or fire. We are a secondary responder. We come in after those reports are made. Once an investigation is concluded, the investigation can be ruled out, which means we didn't find anything wrong. Or if we did find something wrong and there's a family in crisis and they need some assistance, that's. Or if we did find something wrong, and there's a family in crisis and they need some assistance, that's where our family-based safety services come in. And what they do is they work with the families in the homes many times, or sometimes if the family are staying with relatives, while the workers actually work with the family to help create that safe environment for the children. Our Conservatorship Division is our, what we sometimes refer to as our Legal Division, and if there is a situation where the safety of the child cannot be guaranteed, or if it's just so unsafe, or the allegations of abuse or neglect are so severe that we need to bring the child into the state's custody, that's where our Conservatorship comes in. And that's the division that works with the courts that are overseeing our cases that are filed in the courts, and they also work with the families for reunification. Department of Family and Protective Services operates four offices in Cameron County. Two of them are exclusive to CPS, and then there's one licensing office that's exclusive to licensing and one to APS. And in our Brownsville office, we have a combination to where all of our divisions are located under one roof. Cameron County has a population of just over, you know, just under thirty-four thousand children, and this is sort of a demographic breakdown. When we see the word "other," that may be because when we were working with the families, they didn't identify themselves with one of the above listed categories. Looking at some of our intakes for fiscal year 2010, we had five thousand eighty-seven intakes. That means someone in Cameron County felt that there was a child or children that were in a situation that was unsafe, and five thousand eighty-seven times, somebody picked up the phone and called our statewide intake center to make a report. Out of those five thousand reports, four thousand of them were assigned. And you may think that's a large discrepancy in that number, but that just may be overlapping. Let's say there was a child that was injured, and the police department filed a report with us, EMS filed a report, if they were the ones taking the child to the hospital, and then the hospital files a report. So we may have had multiple reports that have come in on one family or one child, and that's why that number may be a little different. And we had just under two thousand confirmed victims. That's where, at the conclusion of our investigation, we were able to prove up that by preponderance of evidence that there was abuse or neglect that had occurred. In that fiscal year, we also removed three hundred and nineteen children. That means that we went to a judge three hundred and nineteen times and said, "Judge, there is a child that is in a situation that is unsafe, or there is abuse and neglect that's going on. This child needs to come into the state's care." And so if you look at that, take out weekends, that's almost one a day in Cameron County. There was also four child deaths, fatalities, that were attributed to abuse and neglect. In our Investigations Division, and I pulled these numbers just last night, just last month, or excuse me, in October, there was just under three hundred and seventy cases called in for investigation in one month in Cameron County. We have seven investigation units in Cameron County. We have three located in Harlingen and four here in Brownsville. In our FBSS, during the month of October, we had four hundred and sixty-two open cases. And what that means is we had four hundred and sixty-two families that we were working with. And out of those four hundred and sixty-two families, they may have one, two, three, four, five, six children, you know, in that family, so that number goes up exponentially. We have four and a half units in Cameron County. There's two and a half in Harlingen and two in Brownsville. In Cameron County, in our CVS Division, this is our Conservatorship Division, this is the division that works with foster care, adoption. We have four units. There's one and a half units in Harlingen and two and a half in Brownsville. In that fiscal year, we had forty-seven children that were legally free for adoption. That means a court heard a case and terminated parental rights. We also had twenty children that were adopted. If you're interested in any of those children, we have our Heart Gallery that's open until the end of December over at the South Texas Children's Museum in Brownsville. And the Heart Gallery is a project where children of Texas, and predominantly South Texas, because we do each one individually, are featured with their biographies, and that is a traveling art show that actually goes around South Texas to help raise awareness and bring attention to the more than three hundred and fifty children in South Texas that are looking for those forever homes. Foster care resources in Cameron County, the Department of Family and Protective Services licensed nine foster homes. There are six child placing agencies which are licensed through the Department of Family and Protective Services, and they operate one hundred and fifty-nine foster homes. We currently have no residential treatment centers for our children in Cameron County. We have several different community engagement programs that we have that are set up statewide, and we also have them here in Brownsville. And in Cameron County, we have free training workshops for community group educators and law enforcement. This is training that we provide to them on abuse neglect at no charge. Many times, we ask them, you know, if you can have, provide a venue, or if you want to come by our office and use a conference room. But a lot of times when we're doing these trainings, they already have a training room, and our staff come in at no cost and perform those trainings. We offer monthly parental groups to where parents who have been involved with CPS, they can come in, and we have a monthly support group for them. We have our Fostering Connections Program that is where relatives can be reimbursed for helping to care for their children if they're going to adopt them versus, you know, maybe having those children stay in a foster care home where they don't know those individuals. We have our family group decision-making. That's where we bring the families in to discuss what's going on in their case, and we involve the families in helping to come to a resolution to help those families be safe. We have our Youth Leadership Council where we have children that are getting older and children that have maybe opted to age out of foster care, where we help to prepare them to become adults. We have our Foster Care and Adoptions. We host regular meetings to help recruit and encourage other individuals to come forward. Our Rainbow Rooms, which are a resource that is provided solely by the community. The state doesn't have any, does not provide funding for the Rainbow Rooms, and this is a resource room for children who come into our initial care on an emergency basis. We have our community volunteer opportunities where individuals from the community can come volunteer at the department and assist us. And then one of our valuable partners is our Child Welfare Boards, because they are the ones who bring a lot of those community individuals to us and help us and support us in what we do. November is our Foster Care and Adoption Awareness Month. It's titled "Why Not Me?" You may see a lot of things in the news at that particular time of the month where we're bringing up that as an issue and a topic. There's more than sixty-one hundred children currently statewide that are legally free for adoption. April is our Child Abuse Prevention Month, where we actually run major media campaigns to help bring that awareness to the community. April is also our Volunteer Appreciation Month, and it's also our Volunteer Recruitment Month, because we want to bring members of the community on board to help us. Child abuse and neglect is a community issue because these are the community's children. I also represent the Adult Protective Services Division, and May is Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and October is our Financial Exploitation Awareness Month. And if you're interested in a similar presentation on statistics about Adult Protective Services or our Child Care Licensing, I'd be more than happy to come back and do another one of those for you as well. In our Licensing Division, we have our "Don't Be in the Dark" campaign. As a licensing division, as a regulatory agency, our records are more public, and we can open those up to the public so they can actually see the enforcement actions we've taken at facilities. Our See and Save is our Water Safety Program and our Hot Car Child Death Prevention Programs. The state operates a multitude of websites where information about the various programs that we have that are available. And reporting child abuse and neglect is very easy. It can be done anonymously. It can be done twenty-four seven. It can be done through our 1-800 number or non-emergency cases. It can also be done over the internet through our e-reporting. But we always recommend that individuals call 911 first if it's an emergency situation. And as I know our time was limited, I wanted to make sure that I kept it short, but, you know, gave you guys a lot of really important information because this is part of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Lennon.
Thank you, Mr. Lennon. I would just like to thank the Commissioners and Judge for allowing us to come in today and speak a little bit about the situation in our community. The Child Welfare Board is working closely with Child Protective Services locally to ensure that we're advocating for our children, providing opportunities for foster parents to be involved and to just really let the community know about what's going on. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming today because they could be at work and they're here just to share some time with us. And next week, we're actually hosting our Christmas party for all the children in the system or foster kids. And it will be held in Brownsville, and I'd like to invite you all to attend. I know last year, Commissioner Benavides, Commissioner Hernandez, and the Judge were able to stop by. And we expect anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred children, and I'll go ahead and kind of give you all the rundown about where it'll be in your emails or through an invitation later so that I don't disclose it to everyone. But it would be really great if you could join us and see the children. There's a lot of caseworkers that will be there and volunteers from CPS, so. Again, thank you for your time. I know you have a long-
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure you did prefer being here to watch our show versus being at the office. I want to thank you, Ms. Benavides, for your leadership, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank Melva for all the work that she's done over the years by herself and in front of us, almost in tears. I want to thank you for sticking it out, and she's a recent mom as well, right? I mean, not that recent, but, you know. And I think one of the issues that, and I think it was one of the last slides, is that of public awareness. And we encourage people, if they see something that just doesn't look right, you're not going to go wrong by reporting it. And it's better safe than sorry, obviously. But I want to thank you for all your volunteer work, and I encourage people to get involved in public service, and this is a great endeavor to be involved and share some of your time. Everyone has limited time. But I want to thank you all for taking the time and the opportunity to come down and visit, visiting with us, and hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Let me say something real quick.
Real quick.
I met with Melva last year, and we had this conversation. It looks like you've come a long ways since the last party, and I'll be there to help you serve pizza again, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was fun.
Yeah, if he doesn't eat half of it.
No, I won't.
It's been a tough year for everyone in our community, and I understand that everyone is going through some financial troubles and stuff, and you know what? Organizations like ours are all falling, are all falling to the side right now because people have to support their own families right now. So anything that you all could help us out with would be greatly appreciated for this party. We accept everything. Health, financial, candy, we need lots of, we don't need any more cupcakes. We've had an outpour of cupcakes. I sent out a message, and within a half an hour, we had eight hundred cupcakes. So we're fine on cupcakes, but we need a lot of candy. We need a lot of token money and volunteers.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Checks in the mail.
They already got me.
And Mr. Sanchez wanted to donate to our party.
Sure.
I think he committed like, I think he committed ten thousand butterfingers.
Whatever the judge gives, I'll match.
Yeah, you'll be safe.
I would, sir, what was your name? I'm sorry, I was getting a cup of coffee when you started. And your position?
I am the Department's Media Specialist and also Public Information Specialist.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We came from Corpus Christi.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. I'm a practicing attorney, and I've been on both sides of the coin. I've, this year, I assisted a child that the parents' rights were terminated, so I assisted a foster mother in adopting that child. On the other hand, I also assisted some parents who their child was taken from them, and-
It wasn't the same case, though, was it?
No.
Okay.
Different case. And, but, you know, it was an unfortunate situation, and I just want to mention it to you so you kind of let the people that you work with know. The child had gotten hurt. They took him to the hospital, and the hospital did some x-rays on him. And what started off as a bruise on the head, which is why they took him in, the x-rays came back and said he had fractures and different things all over his body. The family was told, "Have a relative come down." They're not from here. The father's military, so they fly in Grandma to come place the child with, and then they don't give the child to Grandma. And then I asked the caseworker, "Can you just give them an hour?" Because they took the child without telling them they were going to take them. "Can you give them an hour of supervised visitation just to reinforce to the child, mommy and daddy are here, and, you know, everything's going to be okay. He has to spend the night with some other people," and they wouldn't do that. And then, when it all ended, after they had paid for an attorney and paid for Grandma's flight, it turned out that the x-rays, either the machine was wrong or the person that read them were wrong, because when they checked him at Driscoll, there was nothing wrong with him. So there were some things in there that I think could have been done differently for those types of parents that aren't abusive and neglective but happen to find themselves in an inopportune situation. And so I just mention that because I think when you look at the totality, sometimes if you see parents that have their kid in Montessori school that have a good, clean home, that have a lot to offer a child and doing everything they can, it might be that, you know, it wasn't their fault or something wasn't the way it really should have been. And, you know, I know the parents, it's probably what the child went through, a lot of psychological turmoil that might have been curtailed a little bit had it been handled different. And I just share that with you so you kind of get the other side. And that was the purpose of my sharing it with you. Thank you.
Well, and I do have one short comment, Judge, and I'll make it short. You know, you have some wonderful foster folks out there that take care of kids. I've got a, you know, I've got a pharmacy, and I see some of these people coming in with some of the children that they have placed, and the care that they show to these kids, in my experience, is phenomenal. You know, the caring of those individuals that are out there taking care of these kids is just very commendable, you know, and I tell them that because I think they need to hear it from even all of us. You know, I mean, sometimes I feel like I neglected my children the way they care for the children they bring in, seriously, okay? So- That's a good group of folks out there.
If someone wants to donate, who would they make a check payable to? No, no, but I'm talking like for the-
Cameron County Tell-Off Department.
Okay. And y'all set up the account, all that is set up, ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge? By Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed item carries. Thank you all very much. Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you.
There's a supplemental consent item that did not include when we approved consent. Do I hear a motion to approve that consent item regarding the right of entry?
Is everything okay, Pete? Is that all?
Yeah, the supplemental. That's a supplemental, the right of entry. Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed item carries. Let's go to, anything else on consent? We're done, right? Okay. Budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules?
Judge, Commissioners, you had the budget amendments placed in front of you. The first couple of, three pages are budget amendments. You have budget amendment coming in from Fund 490, which is the DA hot check. You've got the direct forfeiture for the DAs, Constable Precinct 7. On page two, you will see the budget amendment for the Jail Division, and that is putting in place the hiring of the additional jailer slots that this court approved at the last meeting. We're pulling a hundred and fifty thousand from the overtime. Two hundred and fifty thousand is what the sheriff agreed to fund from forfeiture proceeds. And then you've got the addition on the electrical, the water and the sewage and garbage that will be encompassed as well with the additional inmates, with the additional pods opening. You also have MNO probation. Constable Precinct 6, there is a budget amendment for five hundred dollars of donations that have been received already and booked, and that is being booked for Christmas donations, is my understanding, for children. So that is being put into place as well. Budget amendments from Public Works as well.
Are these donations made to the county or to the constable?
Cameron County, Cameron County.
And then do we have to approve their distribution?
What was recommended was the donations have been received in the Treasurer's Office. They have been recorded. We're setting the miscellaneous line item. It's my understanding that they're going to be going through the requisition process and requesting a PO so that they can make these purchases for gifts that will be given to children.
And we'll be able to do that before the holiday, when they're going to do it?
Yes, that is why we're requesting the budget amendment right now, yes. The next pages that you see are line item transfers. You have one for the- You have one for the Civil Division, PD and M, County Clerk Judicial. On page two, there is one for...
How did Public Works get a donation?
That's what I was going to ask, especially $21,000. I'll have to look at it. I don't believe it's a donation. I'll have to... Yeah, it's...
Okay, so it's...
Paying back something that we're...
Okay, well, just send us an email or something.
I'll look at it. It's, I'm sure it's not a donation.
Okay.
I guess in the spirit of Christmas, everybody's being donated.
On...
Maybe we're giving turkeys to everybody?
On page two of the line item transfers, I would ask the court to table the budget amendment for County Court of Law Number 3, which has to do with pulling $1,108 out of court-appointed attorneys to a visiting judge. Those visiting judge expenses are budgeted in the trial court's budget. So that's where it will be paid from.
What page is it?
Page two of the line item transfers.
Okay.
It's County Court of Law 104280.
Wouldn't that one be covered through the Fifth Judicial Region?
The Fifth Judicial Region does not pay for the visiting judge's appointments. The judges submit a... The visiting judges, as they're appointed, submit a...
A bill?
A bill. So those funds are budgeted in the trial court's budget. It should not be charged to each respective court. Got budget amendments for MNO for the courthouse, engineering. The other three on that, the other two on that page are for the unit, the Haida Division. And then you have a budget amendment for TB, for the TB funding for the Health Department. On the last page, you have one for Brownie Road and for the DA direct forfeiture as well, for your approval. There are also salary schedules. The first one is for the tax office under the VIT department. There is a slot number one and two. Slot number two is being reduced. And there is a, the frontline auto supervisor will have a stipend of $2,500. And...
So there's no impact to the bottom line?
No. And this is the VIT, which is at the discretion of the Tax Assessor's Office as well. The next salary schedule is for the Haida, the unit division. That is grant-funded. The next one is salary schedule for Operation Border Star. And that is again, grant-funded as well. Then you have salary schedules for the Juvenile Department. And those are all budget-neutral. And then you have Fund 450, which is again, the Juvenile Department under the regular state aid. You also had the salary schedule for the Jail Division placed in front of you. And speaking with Mike Leonard, he requested that as opposed to adding the 17 detention guards, that he really needed a clerical position. So you will see that slot number 317 is a clerk at a pay of $20,000. And that was on his recommendation. Now, the court did fund the 24... Well, the court did provide the additional 24 jailer slots. And two are from the deputies that are being paid for out of the Jail Division. They're going to provide, there were transport, they're going to provide jailer duties. And the PA program was eliminated as well, which freed up those people to be jailer guards. So the only difference that you see is per the sheriff's recommendation that he needed a clerk as opposed to an additional guard.
So the PA program is no longer active?
That's my understanding, yes. Yes. That's what Mike Leonard stated to the court.
Is this clerk going to work in the booking department by any chance?
Right now, we have a jailer doing visitation work on the weekends and during the week. And we put that jailer back into the mix and hire that clerk to do that work.
And the clerk gets paid less than the jailer?
Yes, sir.
Right, do I hear a motion to approve? Anything else, Martha? You recommend?
I do have a question, though. On the, what was the increase on the tax on the VIT? What employee was getting an increase?
It should be listed on the salary schedule. It's the first slot listed.
First slot.
Slot number one.
And it's an increase of how much?
$2,500 per annum.
Everyone else is the same?
Yes.
Okay, and that will stay with next year's budget?
That is a budget that is presented to the court every year. It's under the VIT Tax Department.
Right, but why is he making this change right now?
I believe Mr. Isagui, or Representative, is office to address it.
Okay.
Tony's here.
This change should have been done during the budget process. It was overlooked. It was my fault not to include it in the packet. And it was overlooked by...
So that person should have got the increase at the beginning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how are we able to give that person an increase if no other people are getting raises with the county?
Well, this individual was given additional responsibilities in order to take care of the IT records for accounts. And of course, that was done October 1st. I was supposed to bring it before the court with the rest of the budgets. We have about four or five budgets. It was my fault not to include it.
And was there money in there at the time to do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is because we have a bunch of county employees. And other employees start asking, "Why does this department get a raise and we don't?" And just to be able to give a good explanation to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the item 4A?
With the, with tabling?
Yes.
The one that you mentioned?
Yes, for 104280.
And void, well, we're not at the checks yet.
Yes, it's going to be tabled.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, all in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed carries claims?
Payroll dated December 9th for $1,622,409 and 1 cent. I have claims number 270097 through 270561. Claims number 270566 through 270692. Void claim number 270243. And void a claim that was approved in the prior meeting, which is warrant number 269661. I have health and insurance-related claims for $114,014.76 for your approval.
Which ones are you voiding, Martha?
Warrant number 270243.
It's got a little...
It should have a circle or a tab on it that's voided. And there was one that was read in as a valid claim from the prior meeting. It was warrant number 269661. I'm entering that one as a void for the record.
Why were you voiding the first one?
The 270243.
Yes.
Yes, that is one that is, that is a purchase that was approved under the equipment financing. And the vendor will, our financing company will finance that purchase directly. So we do not pay for it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, please note my abstention on the affidavits I provided. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed item carries minutes? The 13th, 27th of October, the 10th, and the 16th of November. First three are regular. The last one's a special meeting.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa.
Thank you for the clarification on the one that I had requested.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez, any further discussion? All those in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed item carries? Item D, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing regarding whether to tax the newly defined goods in transit pursuant to Senate Bill 1, Section 11253. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing? By Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any discussion? All those in favor? Signified by saying aye. Any opposed item carries? We are in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, the Senate Bill defined, amended the definition of goods in transit and narrowed the definition. So now, the Commissioners' Court, I think in 2007, had adopted a resolution to tax those goods in transit. But now because of the new change in definition, you have to do this again and hold a public hearing.
Who requested?
Well, the tax office brought it to me and I think also Martha brought it.
Something we need to do, right? Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody want to make public comment? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? By Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa, to close public hearing. All in favor? Signified by saying aye. Any opposed carries? Item E, consideration possible adoption of order number 2011012056, authorizing the taxing of goods in transit at defined Senate Bill 1. Moved by Commissioner Hernandez. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion?
I just have one question. What will this, or who will this impact?
Tony, you want to answer? Can you answer that?
Wouldn't it be anybody that has goods that are being...
In transit?
In stored temporarily in Cameron County, even if they're not going to be sold here? In other words, if you bring stuff into the warehouses and they sit for a month and then they go out, we're taxing them.
Right now, it defines it as stored under a contract of payment by public warehouse operator. So they're being held.
Wouldn't that be the same as whatever? Is there certain time of the year or does it automatically get taxed all the time? Versus what's an inventory at the end of 12/11?
Whatever is stored, whatever is stored in the county.
Right.
And just for your information, we send out letters to all the jurisdictions that we service and the majority of them have adopted this order to continue taxing.
But how is that going to be enforced? I mean, I'm just curious.
The appraisal district takes care of that.
But how are they going to know what's in transit unless they're relying on the documents?
The companies have to file a rendition, just like everybody else.
Huh.
Now, does this include any goods in transit?
Any goods, yes, sir.
Like produce, whatever?
Well, I think there's a definition, but I don't have it with me. I think they'll be have that. But the appraisal district is the one that handles, as you know, the appraisal process. And in order to tax this, these type of goods, this order has to be...
Yeah, but this is an ongoing... I mean, the appraisal district assesses value once a year. I mean, but this is an ongoing thing. So I don't understand how they're going to do that.
Well, it's been taxed since 2007 because it...
Well, whatever is in a certain place at a certain time of the year, December 31st or January 1st is what gets taxed, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so now, any goods in transit, once they come into Cameron, gets taxed before they go out?
Exactly.
I just don't know how they're going to monitor that, but okay.
Does that include like Maquilas and stuff like that?
Anything that comes in.
You know, I think that, and I don't have a problem supporting it, but I think that, Tony, if you could get us like, as a category, how much we had that was affected by this resolution for last year?
I have requested the appraisal district, the dollar amount that's going to be affected. They don't have one, but they have indicated it's in the millions.
Well, a ballpark figure would be good enough.
I'll get you a list.
I guess my, you know, yeah, I mean, I think we need to support this. But I guess I'm trying to figure out...
How do you enforce it?
How, yeah, how do you enforce it, number one? And how does this differ, a goods in transit versus a ad valorem tax on inventory?
Well, I think the appraisal district has her method. I mean, I'm not aware of what...
Wouldn't inventory be what's actually being sold here as opposed to...
Whatever is there, yeah.
Right. But like, if you have warehouses that bring stuff in from Mexico or off the port, they sit for 30 days and then they're shipped out of county, never sold here, we're taxing those now.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I think more importantly, I sat on that board for a number of years. And this came up. And I remember one specific item that was goods in transit. And that was a refurbishing of a platform that was being rebuilt.
At MFLs?
At MFLs or somewhere on the port. And there was a value when it got here and a value when it left. And you know, all of that is taxed somehow.
That's true.
I'll get you a list.
As you build the value, the tax goes up? But how do they keep track of it?
Yeah, but yeah, keeping track is one thing. But then as they buy all this stuff, they're paying somebody a sales tax when they buy it. I'm just, no, no, I'm just asking questions. People are going to have those kinds of questions. There's already a line item already when you do your...
You two serve on that district, so I think you should give a report to the Commissioners.
Yeah, we'll do, sure, we'll do that.
I'll get you a list.
Yeah, and report back to us.
Yeah, report back to us next year.
I'll get you a list and email it to each one.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion and a second to approve? All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed carries? Item F, discussion and possible authorization to submit beach maintenance permit application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers?
Morning, Judge Commissioners. We have Naismith Engineering representatives here with us. We have this item on the agenda to get authorization from the court to go ahead and submit this application. What I provided to you on backup is the actual document. The original document is about 40 pages, but majority of that is just exhibits. And what I did was I showed you the narrative of the application. And I also included in there two exhibits from South Padre Island and two exhibits from Boca Chica. What they are is they're cross-sections of the beach in different areas. And the reason I showed you two of each is because, and Jay will explain better, but there's two seasons that we have there, or two parts of the year, the seasons of the year, that will be...
I think we have four seasons.
Well, I'm saying, there's two parts of the year that what we'll do is we'll be moving sand upwards and then we'll be moving it back out into the long shore. But other than that, Jay and I have been working on this document. And we also included the Dune Protection Chairman in this because how it would affect our erosion response plan. And there's some language in here that talks about moving some of the sargassum and pushing it up on the washout areas and creating a dune or a barrier to collect some of the sand.
What is sargassum?
Seaweed. That's a technical term for seaweed.
I learned bathymetery yesterday. Today, I learned sargassum, okay?
It's not sarcasm.
Sargasm.
Yeah, okay.
Sargassum.
But other than that, I mean, this document is addressing, majority of the courses is addressing the protection of the shorebirds and also the sea turtles.
Sea turtles.
Anybody have any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some move.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? Item G, consideration authorization to negotiate a concession agreement with Alan Zahn. This is the helicopter guy. That's a good way to put it.
Judge Commissioners, we put this on the agenda. So Mr. Zahn's agreement with us is going to expire at the end of the year. And we put this on just so we can get direction on where we want to go with this. If we want to RFP this out, if we're interested in pursuing some type of business on the flats. And another reason we put it on there is because he had started hiring consultants and trying to gather some information. And I didn't want him to go out and spend a lot of money and then come back and we say, you know, we're not even interested in pursuing this. So what I wanted to see, we can get direction if we do so we can pursue either an RFP or direct negotiate with them. But we did get a call back from Fish and Wildlife yesterday morning. And it was positive for this, this development. The, the three things that they were concerned about was, or not concerned, the three comments that they had was the, that was going to be low to no impact to the shorebirds on, on the bayside and the flats. The other thing was they, the only concern that they had was, let's say if there's a northern and there's a high tide, it happened together, then it's going to push or flush those shorebirds further inland. So what they wanted was, they wanted Alan Zahn to, to not conduct any, any flights during that time. And when we were talking to him, he, he probably wouldn't be flying out during the northern anyway. So he agreed to that. And what, what Fish and Wildlife was going to do is they were going to draft up some language and send it to Mr. Zahn so that he could put in a document for the, I believe for the Corps of Engineers.
I got, I got several emails this morning not supporting this from some South Padre Island residents. And I'm going to make at least one email part of the record from, from Rob Nixon. I told him that I would read part of his email. "The Surf Rider Foundation, South Texas Chapter, has no issue with Mr. Zahn setting up his helicopter ride business on South Padre Island. However, we feel that allowing him to set up his business inside Andy Bowie Park, a park dedicated for public use, does not add any, any needed amenity for public, for the public using that park. In fact, we feel that it would cause more of an annoyance for recreational users." He goes on to talk about kite flyers, kite boarding enthusiasts and business providing lessons for, for beginners. Apparently FAA regulation will not allow the flying of kites over five pounds within two miles from an airport facility. And, and I really don't know where, I don't know if you've even looked at that, but what is that going to do to the, to the kite enthusiasts if we do that, number one? Number two, does this hold with the, the park purpose as a definition by putting this in Andy Bowie Park? And how are you going to address the folks that live in, in the residential area known as, as the shores where this is going to be somewhat adjacent to?
Isn't that why we had it at Jeremiah's because that wasn't park property? But then they needed more room or why did we move it to the flats?
Well, it's not moved yet.
No, no. Yeah, because he, what he wanted to do is he wanted to, to be more permanent. So because of some of the, I would imagine, I don't want to speak for Alan, but I think that, that the there's some obstacles there, of course, power lines and everything else.
At Jeremiah's?
At Jeremiah's. And over here in the flats, it's open. He would be able to make an improvement that would be more permanent and not really affect a lot of people. But in, in, to answer your question, Judge, you know, I called Richard and Dennis about two weeks ago and told them that we were planning to put this thing back on the agenda. And they had concerns that we wanted them in writing or, or their, whoever their residents or them. And I haven't received anything. I don't know if the court has.
Well, I got some
The only, the two emails.
I got two or three emails this morning.
Right.
And I think they're all the same.
Right, and I, and I reminded them last night that we were having this thing on the agenda. And I got one from, from Mrs. Bagley.
Right.
And I can add, it's, it's similar to, to Rob's, but
You know, the one question I have, and it's probably more of a question to, to Mr.
Zahn?
Zahn. Pat Clements met with you, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I know that, you know, we cut short our meeting because he was, there was a group rushing to come down and meet with you.
Well, I apologize.
Yeah, so because of your fault, you know, we had to rush our meeting in Corpus.
Oh, my goodness.
And then we would have known they were all coming, we could have probably met in the island instead of Corpus, you know?
Oh, my, I apologize.
But anyway, how did that meeting go and did she reduce to writing any of her concerns?
Actually, the, the meeting went exceedingly well, as with most of the documents I presented to the court and to the public. Helicopter operations immediately create an emotional response or a visual. But the reality, of course, as we've proven the last nine months at where we've been, is, is quite far from, from that emotional response. That's what Pat experienced yesterday. The initial interaction was trepidation and concern for, you know, what she's culpable to, to ensure the safety of and security of the fauna and the wildlife. By the end of the meeting, a very strong positive handshake, she said she was excited to see this being brought to the island. She thought that it was a wonderful thing. And now that she understood how operations can be performed, she saw no impact. The, the, actually, the phone call that Javier received, he indicated he was surprised at the response.
After the meeting
Yes, sir.
The other morning, I would have been too.
Now, the
Surprised in what sense?
In a very positive manner, sir.
But who was surprised?
Javier.
Oh, but everything surprised Javier.
You know, I think Pat was surprised too. Ms. Clements made it clear that once she understood the realities of the operation, it changed her perception entirely. The mentioning of the FAA, I would simply, I would simply ask if, if people want to start, you know, questioning the legality.
Let's go back to the, to the, to the kite users and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
Everybody mentioned that. How is this going to impact?
Not at all, sir. As a matter of fact, I would simply say, have we impacted it to date? We've been flying by that beach for almost eight months. I personally have flown many of those flights myself.
How about FAA regulations in regards to the
Well, so it was an airport, but this is not an airport.
No, sir, agreed. This is, this is not an airport, this is not a heliport, this is not a public use facility. It's, it's going to be, those things increase restrictiveness, so that's a good thing. With regard to the approach angles and the approach vectors, if we're not going to disrupt the pluber, the little guy that runs along the shoreline, there's no way we're going to impact the, the beachgoers. If anything, as most people are aware of, helicopters are a draw. They're an attractive feature to things. Most people are, we have people standing around Jeremiah just watching the helicopter come and go. And they're within 30 feet of the helicopter and they're, so it's, it's been a very positive experience so far entirely.
Is there anybody here to speak on this other than Mr. Zahn from the island?
No one against it, anyone?
Javier.
You want us to leave it where it's at, Mr. Hawkinson? Would you rather it go to the flats?
Yeah, it's always good as long as it's not in my backyard.
I can't hear you. I don't know if any private property will lease it.
We could have said that to Schlitterbaum as well.
For the same reason you're there, you know? Cheap rent.
Location, location, location.
Cheap rent.
So, you know, we, and I'll simply, I'll simply let the court know this. We, we made some commitments when you first gave us the opportunity. And thank you so much for that opportunity back in March, April. We have followed through without fail with those commitments to be sensitive to everyone and the region. Commissioner Benavides made it clear with regards to operations over Schlitterbaum that we would maintain the clearances that we stated we would and we did. We have monitored island web chat rooms to pay attention to concerns. We've even responded to those without being asked directly. We are going to continue along that path. We believe that the service, obviously focused on the tourism activity as, as one of the key factors, is going to add a great deal of value. The meetings we had yesterday with numerous park board members, is that correct, sir? They were all highly in favor. They, their only concerns were aesthetics as far as whatever is built so that it looks next generation. Basically, the island's said to be a world-class destination, you need world-class services. This is a world-class service and we're going to follow those, those lines.
What about the issue, whether it's a park purpose or not?
That's an excellent question.
Have we gotten through that yet?
No, sir, and that's, and if I could, I, I know it's, it's, if you want a response, sir, or you want me to?
No, sir, we haven't checked into, into that. We, we've been meeting with Delvia as far as, you know, how we would approach this.
Well, will, will you do that in the, during the concession or negotiating discussion? Delvia, is that what you guys are going to do during that discussion, whether it's a, hey Bruce?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, can you ask me again?
Oh, I thought it was Bruce from there.
Well, Commissioner.
You've only got 30 seconds, Bruce. Will you discuss that during the, during the concession negotiations? Or will you be looking at whether or not this falls under a park purpose endeavor?
I was just speaking with the commissioner on that. I think this is, since this is within the park and the issue that we have under litigation is not, it's because we own this outright. We didn't
There's no issue, okay.
But this is part of the park that we bought.
All right, so today's agenda item is simply to enter into negotiations for the concession. If we can't reach an agreement on the, on the negotiations, and obviously it's a moot point, correct?
Correct, and also
Also to condition it on, you know, them, if you decide you want to go that route, to, to make sure that they get all the permits they need, especially from the Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, it'll be subject to all that.
Well, and I, I believe that's what you were trying to do before we even had this discussion, right?
Yes, basically what we're looking for, sir, gentlemen and ladies, is can we, can we do this? Obviously, meeting the rules and restrictions and stipulations as a part of the agreement, which would all be Army Corps of Engineers, building, construction plans, what is it going to look like, all those details. If that is a green light, that's going to enable us to, to take those steps and present
Can you put a big longhorn on the helipad?
You know, actually, one of the things we were thinking about doing, when we were coming to you with a request for signage, we want to take one of these types of helicopters and put it on a stick, call the helicopter on a stick, as far as the sign goes on in front of the establishment. Do a contest with the, the local region schools, the children of the schools, you can all blank sheet of paper, design the picture. Then we'll paint the helicopter that way. These are the types of exciting things, so as far as a park purpose or not, most parks I know of have some sort of drive-in events.
Well, as, as far as park purpose, I think it, it passes muster because it's a, an entertainment thing that you would do in a park. As far as RFPs, I don't think we need to do RFPs because, like Delvia said, we, it's park property. We do have to do RFPs if we're going to leave it at Jeremiah's, which I don't know that that's anyone's idea to do that anyway, so. Because we, we've been there, what, almost a year? So we need to get off, you know, move on.
Fisher, cut bait?
Right.
But I was one step ahead of you, Judge, that's why I was over there talking to Delvia. Remember, I'm always one step ahead of you.
Yeah, but it's always backwards. Okay, do we have, do we have, do any, any further discussion?
We need to just authorize the negotiations? Is that what you need from us?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Ganza, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item H, consideration approval of exterior building signage and dedication plaque for the Santa Rosa Tech Center. Frank?
Judge and Commissioners, we, we expect substantial completion on the Santa Rosa building later this month.
Is the microphone on, Frank? Okay, I didn't hear you.
We're expecting substantial completion on the Santa Rosa building later this month. And we need to tell the contractor what the building sign should look like, plus the dedication plaque. We've given you a, a proposal for both those items. And we either need to know if you want to see any changes or if the proposals are acceptable.
Okay, do you, are you all ready to make a, a decision on this? Or you want to wait till the next meeting and just tell them to go ahead or what?
Do we always put all those services on there?
Typically, the rooties
I mean, landscape, design, structure, engineers, mechanical, those are kind of like, I mean, you'd figure you'd have like GMS architects, right?
Yeah, typically you do, but, but it's a court's call, that's why it's here for your approval. Or if you want to move more to the portion where the architect has his piece, you can do that also.
You know, I know, I know that it's a, a, I guess a way of doing things that you put the existing court members that are there when it happens. And I think the one, the one name that I see on there or that I do not see on there is that of Commissioner Tamayo because, you know, and I don't think there'd be any problem, but anybody, she was the one that basically was, was one of the, one of the advocates and instruments in getting the funding, you know, for this center. And just, the timing just didn't work right, but I don't know if we want to work something out where we may want to put, you know, Commissioner Wood was here at the time too when we voted on it. You know, maybe to put, you know, the prior members that were here, Commissioner Tamayo, Commissioner Wood.
We can do that.
You know, I, I think, I mean, because they were here when it was voted on, everybody else is the same.
Just add them, can you add them, like, maybe underneath each one of the others or something, you know, just? Like, or it says Ernie Hernandez? Just somehow they're fitting John Wood and under Dan Sanchez, somehow they're fitting Ed Tamayo?
We can do that.
Can we do that? You know, Pat, you know, something, something.
Are we going to name the building after them?
You could.
No, I don't want to do that.
Oh, okay.
This is their building.
Oh, that's true, it, it was Congress.
All right, so there's no rush for this, right?
Uh, the sooner the better.
Yeah, but the signage is not that big a deal.
The, the contractor has to place an order for, for the, for the signage.
Well, we can defer it till the, the day before our next, I mean, our next meeting, right?
I will let them know.
Yeah, let them know that, I mean, we can do that. All right, do I hear a motion to, to table till the next meeting? And then, you know, at the interim, come back with another draft or how we're going to
Bring us a rendition or email us a rendition of what you propose.
Okay, without all the, you know, okay. Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
By Commissioner Ganza, I have a second, by Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item I, consideration approval to waive 60-day notice for creation of the city portage of tax increment reinvestment zone? Didn't we already do this?
This is just to waive the notice, this is not to
Okay, do I hear a motion? Seconded by Commissioner Ganza, seconded by Commissioner Sanchez, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item J
That was easy.
Thank you, Ed.
Item J, consideration approval of the interlocal agreement between South Padre Island and Cameron County pursuant to the reinvestment zone. Commissioner?
Judge, I had asked, I, I had been having conversations with South Padre Island, namely Darla Jones, I believe. And so I asked Delvia to put this back on the agenda, so for reconsideration and approval. So I think you have a representative that's representing the island here.
Well, unless you're going to tell us something new, then nothing's really changed unless, I think there were some issues that regarding the language and some information. And I guess, Bruce, have all those things been cleared up?
We've taken, we've taken care of all of that, Judge.
So everything that was in dispute the last time has been cured.
It's been cured.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, okay. Do I hear a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I, I will mention again that I don't believe these areas in these terms are blighted areas. I think that, you know, any one of us know that having problems finding a pad for a helicopter, okay, to operate out of, there's none within the city locale, you know? You know, everything is of, of huge value in that area. You know, I don't see blight, I don't see development of any type of affordable homes. I don't see any develop, you know, all of this development is development for commercial purposes for the most part. There's some condominium development. Some of the maps exclude folks on there that think they should be included. At the end of the south end, there's some people that would have liked to have been part of this that are not included. They have made known that fact to the city. And, you know, I mean, if there's exclusions and there's no blight in the area that we're doing this, I find it difficult to support.
The, can you address those real quick? And do you know what people, Commissioner was referring to?
Judge Commissioners, no, Lance Elliott with Tiff Services, South Texas. No, I do not, but we will be happy if anyone wants to be added to the zone to amend the boundaries of the zone. The state legislature has, has made it very easy to amend the boundaries of the zone and we will include anyone from the island that wants to be included, we will include them in the zone.
Commissioner, can you get those names of those folks?
Those folks have been in touch with, with the city. Yeah, well, with somebody at the city.
You know, I'd like to make a comment. We have strived to the court as well as the RMA to make connectivity projects that will lead to the island. And you're right, Commissioner Ganza, maybe you can't say that this is a blighted area in comparison to maybe some other areas. But at the same time, in the long run, this will certainly enhance tourism to the island, thus bring more dollars to our county by the addition of the second causeway. And I know it's not like around the corner, but at the end of the day, our taxable val, uh, the tax values are certainly going to be higher. And, you know, the island still provides 17% of our tax base. So I think it would certainly go along with our transportation projects to enhance the island and help them along too.
One, one of the chief projects is the expansion of the convention center. As you know, the McAllen Convention Center has, has been heavily impacted, the South Padre Island Convention Center. And of the expansion of that convention center, because the county shares in the revenue, whenever that center is rented, the county receives part of that rental income. And so it will certainly benefit the county in the long run and the short run.
Just, can you, can you tell me what the total investment for the county will be in the number of number of years that this terrace is in place? For the record?
Actually, I didn't bring that document with me. I brought the interlocal agreement with me, but that, you should have that document.
You remember the number?
Oh.
I'd like for you to say it.
Over 15 years, and this is based upon new value, not existing value.
Right.
The county will continue. And, and let me say this before I throw this number out there. The city of South Padre Island was very specific to me in their instructions, anything that was under development, for example, the Miramar, was not to be included in the zone because they were counting on that future income, and they knew the county was counting on that future income. So we did not include properties in the zone that we knew on that day were going to be generating additional monies into the zone. So the total number of new funds that we're projecting is $12,621,633 over a 15-year period.
From the county?
From the county.
Okay, $12 million. So...
And, and that, that number will only occur if we have additional development on vacant property within the zone.
So the monies in the budget going to the convention center construction are not taxable dollars to this county? The number of dollars going into Padre Boulevard reconstruction are not taxable dollars to this county, which is $55 million and $60 million, right?
Yes, sir.
So the only thing we're looking at would be the entertainment district redevelopment, well, which is, that would include the sewer and water line upgrades and replacement of $20 million? That could possibly lead to the increased values that we can...
We, we believe that with the redevelopment of the convention center, that that will lead to more year-round use of facilities on South Padre Island, and will bring additional tax dollars into the county. We believe that with the reconstruction of Padre Island, that that will lead to, in the areas where we have reconstructed Padre Boulevard, that has significantly dropped the pedestrian accident and the accident rates. So these, there's imputed costs and there's direct property costs, and we believe that these improvements will enhance the value of all of the property on South Padre Island, and in doing so, will increase the tax revenue to Cameron County.
Let me ask you a question, and I should have thought about it early on, and I should have asked this question early on, because it might affect some of us on the court. Anybody that owns property on South Padre Island, would, if we owned property on, would we have a conflict in supporting this if, if we owned property on the island, whether it's a piece of land or a, or a condo? Because what you just said right now, you know, it was going to improve the values of all property in Cameron County? I mean, in, on the island?
It will, it will, it will not, the appraisal district, God bless them, appraises improved property on South Padre Island at 100% of market. It will not be affecting the already improved property, but we have significant amounts of vacant property on South Padre Island.
Well, it may not, it may not for appraisal district purposes, but for selling purposes. I mean, because I'm, I'm just saying what, what you just said, and now it just brought to light, I mean, I own a little lot on the island, I've had it for a long time, and, and I don't want to vote for something that directly or indirectly, all of a sudden, the value of that lot, I wish it would, would go up because of this. So I will tell you, I just thought about this when, when you said that, and I think, you know, there might be other members of the court, if they have property on South Padre Island, may need to abstain.
Well, all, all the research, all the research that has been done on tax increment reinvestment zones in, in major cities...
Exactly, I want that problem.
All, all of the property in, in Houston, inside of Loop 610, is in a tax increment reinvestment zone. The city of San Antonio has 28 tax increment reinvestment zones, of which many, if not all, contain significant pieces of city property, city parks, city streets, and it doesn't, the, the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone in and of itself does not increase property value. The purpose of the zone is to direct funds that will, over time, cause the development or redevelopment, which is what the statute says, of property within the zone. And the, we consider that the, the convention center improvements, the improvements to Padre Boulevard, will, over time, enhance the development or redevelopment of vacant property or blighted property within the zone.
Well, that may be true, but I'm looking at, I'm listening to what you said a few minutes ago, that, you know, if and when we do this, it improves all this, and it'll, it'll improve the values of all the property on South Padre Island, is what I heard.
Well, let me rephrase that.
Well, too late. You've already said it.
Improve the value...
You can't rephrase it.
Improve the value of the undeveloped property on South Padre Island.
Well, I have an undeveloped piece of property, I mean, so that, that would affect me. Okay. Any further discussion?
How about, does the city intend to annex more property, more county property?
Well, in, in the course of time, cities always annex property. I mean, that's just the nature of cities in the state of Texas. I mean, that almost all cities have annexation policies. I don't think that at this particular time... Does the city have a five-year annexation plan?
No, it's, no, sir. If we annex property, it will be under the exempt statutes for the annexation plan. We will not have to have an annexation plan in place.
Okay. Do you intend to do any annexation that involves county property in the near future?
County-owned property?
County?
Yes, sir, we do, we do intend to.
So you're going to, you know, here we are, we're giving you a tax break, basically, on the terse, and then you're going to take in some of these properties where potentially we could get revenues from hotels if they were developed or things of that sort?
The council policy on annexation at this time is they will only consider voluntary annexations, so unless the court wanted the city of South Padre Island to annex land in your possession, that would be the only way that that would occur, and that is the policy of the city council.
Well, it's good until you all change the policy.
Until you have a different majority.
Well...
Or, you know, like anything else.
I think that they, I think there's a lot of history behind that, and so the city is looking at cleaning up its boundaries to the south, but it would not even, it has not even entertained the idea of talking to the county about any parkland that's on, that's out in the south.
Yeah, and if you could, could you introduce yourself to the record, please?
I'm so sorry. Joanie Clark, I'm the city manager for South Padre Island.
Thank you, Joanie. I mean, I know you, but frankly not.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. And then we are also, of course, looking to the north, but again, only considering voluntary annexations. So it would be something that would be mutually beneficial to the landowner and the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Okay, I had a motion and a second. I will be abstaining for the reason that, that I just mentioned. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I abstained from the vote and from discussion for the record.
Well, not abstain from the discussion, from the vote, yes.
I didn't say a word on the discussion. I abstained.
Okay. The, yeah, I have an abstention as well, so that's, it fails. It fails one, two, two. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, let me take one item for discussion on the supplemental, which is consideration of possible action on approval of a resolution adopting the realignment of county election precincts. Roger, you're on.
This is just like a housekeeping thing, right?
Yeah, I think so.
This is housekeeping. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry?
This is the housekeeping, just to clean up some stuff, or what?
No, this is, this is to adopt a resolution.
Another one?
Well, this, yes, because what you've done already, you've already adopted the, the commissioner precinct lines realigned, and also the JP lines, JP constable lines. So what this is, is the election voting precincts. The election voting, this, this resolution adopts voting precincts that will be realigned to comply with what you've already done, and what the state has done with the congressional districts, the commissioner districts, and the JP constable district lines as they were realigned. We had to realign the voting precinct lines for the purpose of, of giving effect to all of these other redistricting that has been, that has already been done. And so this would be your last map that would have to be approved as far as realignment of any, any type of precincts.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Do you need to show us something, or just...
Yes, well, I have, I placed something before you, during your break, which shows you this and this, and I have it on, where I can put it on the screen and go through each one of them. I'm sorry.
That's what you placed before us?
Yes, sir. It's, it's on, it was on top, there on your left-hand side, towards the top.
Yes?
Resolution.
Okay.
And we have also placed the, the map with proposed realigned voting precincts up front, and the, the one that we currently are in. Now, the one that we're talking about will be for beginning January 1st of 2012, is we new voting precincts for that, for that period and from then on, unless some other adjustments are made. What we have on the screen now, I've got 32 of these frames, okay? What we have on the screen is Precinct 73, and Precinct 73 was realigned to allow that part, that portion, which lies west of the Brunswick Country Club, but just north of what is Precinct 61. That is realigned to go with Precinct 54, new realigned Precinct 54. Precinct 54, and there's, there's a frame there with Precinct 54, but to let you know, it, it, and to the north of it is the, the boundary line, is the boundary line for the school districts, the Los Fresnos and the, and the Brunswick and the school districts. Also, this was done because of Section 42.006 of the Election Code, population requirements, which Precinct 54, as you recall, had a large population on it already, and we had to, we had to do some of this. Now, most of the precincts here, the lines that were redrawn were to, to comply with the already drawn and adopted commissioner districts and JP districts. And so there's only a few of them, a couple of them, that we're redoing because of the population requirements. But Precinct 29, the following frame, number two, realigns that portion of Precinct 29, which is in the northwest part of the, of that precinct, and it's a portion that will be combined with Precinct 36. It goes west of Paloma Road. Frame number three is your Precinct 2. Precinct 2 is, was actually that part of Precinct 2 and the new Precinct 105, and that Precinct 105 had to be split out from Precinct 2 because of the JP realignments. They're both in different precincts and, or, yeah, JP precincts, and so a new Precinct 105 was created. Precinct 62A, if you recall, Precinct 62A was there from probably the last census, and it was unnecessary, we did away with that precinct, it was combined with Precinct 62.
So you're going to be able to send the new voter cards and everything else in time?
Yes, sir. We're working diligently to get that done. Norma, my staff member, has been working on it tirelessly to get all of that done so that we can get all of the cards out. We have a deadline to get those out by January 13th, so we, we're in line and we're on time to get those out. Precinct 4 and 5, on frame number 5. Now, Precinct 4 is totally different from where it was before, simply because...
This is voting precinct.
Precinct 4, voting precinct. Yes, sir.
Which is what, school?
Omito.
Omito, yeah, okay.
It's in the Omito area. Yeah, so part of 50, part of 54, which is in the Omito area, is now part of 4. And the north part of 48, there's a section there where it, it, it meanders a little bit and goes, goes towards the, the east line of voting precinct 48. That is now Precinct 4. So Precinct 4 does not include the whole section that goes all the way east. It's, it was a long, it was a big precinct, so it was cut short and we made it a new precinct. We also cut part of the west side of Precinct 4 that was realigned with, with the commissioners' lines.
Now, Roger, when you're dividing these into two, are they still going to vote at the same place?
No, we have some of them that will be voting in a different place. Most of them will be voting at the same place.
Okay.
But we will have some differences.
That have to go, okay.
Yes, that will have to go to a different location. Yes, sir.
But it's the same place.
And at the time, I'm sorry.
No, they have...
Mostly it would be the same place, but for example, Precinct 4 now will not be voting at, with, let's see...
They're going to go to Los Fresnos.
Well, we're going to go to, we're going to go to Omito.
Villarreal Omito.
Villarreal, correct.
Roger, and at the time that you mail out your new registration cards...
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to be telling them that they will not be voting at the same place? Because on Election Day, this is what happens when we change. They show up at the original site that they've been voting at, and then you tell them, well, no, you have to go halfway across town, and at that point, they go home.
Yes, ma'am. We will be addressing that. I will be publishing it in a paper, because I, we do realize that there will be people that will be confused, and there will be complaints, and that's one of the reasons why the, the precincts that were split, we never used, we didn't use those precinct numbers again, those that were deleted. We didn't use them again simply because of that same reason, because people would be going to a location because there's, for that precinct that was there before, which no longer pertains to that precinct. And so we will have, we're not reusing numbers, in other words. If you, if you will, let me, let me tell you, we have, we, the number, the precinct, the last precinct number that we're using is Precinct 87, which is, anything beyond, before that are the precincts that we, we know and we're familiar with, that we're currently using. From then on, we've got the new precincts, Precincts 95 through 105. Okay, those were split out to give effect to, to the new redistrict commissioners and JP lines and the congressional district, in addition to the city wards that we have in effect. So some of those precincts will be voting back to where they were before it got split out and before it became a new precinct, but some of them will change. And we will, like I said, we will make every effort to make that known. We will put it on our website, it's going to be on our website. As a matter of fact, as soon as, as soon as this, we're done here, we're going to go back and put the maps on the website, put the voting precincts on the map site, to make sure that we, we do our best to let the people know about any changes that have come about in their voting precincts and their locations. As soon as we have all the locations set up and ready, and we've got pretty much most of them done, we will put that out, too.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just concerned, because, I mean, a lot of people don't relate to a precinct number, okay? You ask them, well, you know, what's your precinct number, and it's like a blank look.
I go to...
You know, I go to, you know, where is Saca? And so some of them don't, aren't privy to a computer to get on the website or to, you know, read a map or whatever, so my concern is, will you try and alert those people whose precincts are changing that, you know, they need to go vote at another place? And the other thing is, of course, and you and I had already talked about this, the new voter ID rules.
Correct.
You showed me what you were going to...
Yes.
At the same time, are you going to be sending that out?
That has been delayed. While we, we're still going to do that, the delay has come about from DOJ, which they have required from the state more information, and so they've extended their deadline to approve, to preclear that, that bill, okay, further down. But nevertheless, Secretary of State's office has asked us to continue with the plan, and they will provide us some information so that we can advertise that. And they will be doing that also.
We're going over our two-hour limit here.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Roger, you didn't move me out of my precinct, did you?
I don't...
On 18? Page 30?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
That was not, that was not the intent, Commissioner.
Pretty close.
You're about to be outvoted, though.
Pretty close.
All right, any, any questions? Because we've already hit our two-hour limit here, we're getting charged double time.
Oh, well, we, I've got, I've got the rest of the, the frames to go through, but you've got them in front of you... got them in front of you, and I will be placing the map for the next three consecutive weeks. I will be publishing that map in the, in a, probably both papers, the Brunswick Herald and the Valley Morning Star. We're required to do it on one Valley-wide paper.
Well, can you do it, I mean, I don't know, a lot of people read the Sambino News as well.
They know where to vote.
They know where to vote, yeah.
Can we maybe send postcards to the specific ones that are going to be affected? Because I don't think that's a big number, right? I mean, compared to all the county voters, just the affected individuals.
Individuals that are affected.
Like send an additional postcard to them?
Maybe do, Norma, is put it, put it at the time that we send out the, the cards, send out a, some information on it.
Or maybe like, you know how the newspaper sometimes has an ad that's like, not glued on, but just kind of stuck on that you can peel off?
Yes.
Maybe do something like that, just on those cards of the group that are going to get affected. That way, we've given them a heads up, and it doesn't cost us anything other than putting that little sticky on there to notify them.
We could do that. The notification of voter ID bill is also going to be on that card, on the reverse side of it.
Okay.
So...
Well, I mean, if you want to add it to that, or just somewhere put it on there so people know.
Yeah, we'll do that. That's a good idea.
Because not everybody gets the paper, not everybody reads the paper, and at least this way, whoever gets their card got notice.
Okay, we'll plan to do the notification to those individuals that will be changing the, the location of where they vote.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think one possible issue is, on the new precincts that have been created through all of this, if you could make it possible when we vote for voting locations where you're going to have them, that those precincts that had the number changes, like maybe from 34 to 100, now they have a new number, excuse me, to let them be able to go back and vote at the precinct where they normally vote, at least this time, then they'll, because if you, if you go move them, you know, change their number and move them somewhere else, it's going to cause a lot, that's what, it's going to cause a big confusion, but if you can leave them at their old voting site for that particular, for this particular next go-around, it might help alleviate some of that confusion.
If it's possible, we will do that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else?
Just to quote Mark Twain, you know, if you're not, if you don't read the paper, you're not informed, and if you read the paper, you're misinformed.
Okay, you're witty today.
I'll second that.
Must be the Christmas spirit. That was a motion by Commissioner Gatsa to...
I think you're from the newspaper. Mark Twain said it.
Notice, she turned off the mic when he started to talk. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve by Commissioner Gatsa, saying by Commissioner Sanchez? Any further discussion?
Does this mean we're going to leave David Garza in his residence? Yeah.
For now. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carey's.
Commissioners, thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
All right. We're done with the regular part of the meeting, so we can start. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Sound move.
By Commissioner Sanchez, saying by Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, Adam Carey, to discuss the following items. Item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning negotiations of possible concession agreement pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item B, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Indiana Ariaga versus Cameron County and others pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Item C, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Miguel Angel Cruz versus Cameron County Sheriff's Department pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Item D, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding authorization for continued representation of Omar Lucio pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A and B and 2. Item E, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning possible litigation against Troncoso Reyes-Lopez pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Item F, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding issues with non-law enforcement county employees using State Highway 550 Toll Road pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item G, deliberation of possible purchase of real property in the City of Los Fresnos pursuant to Code Section 551.072.